Oh, we're not exactly synced up. There we go.
I have six right now.
Who's who's listening to Spectrum and who's listening to somebody else?
I'm on Spectrum.
Me too.
Okay, well, it being six o'clock, I call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for November 4th, 2020. Sherri, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quilisi?
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Here.
Commissioner Lottis?
Here.
Commissioner Trent?
Here.
And Commissioner Swift absent.
Okay, and next is the Pledge of Allegiance. I think we have we have a window open, I see, for the council chambers, but it just says council chambers right now. There you go. And Commissioner Trent, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag
Flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God.
Under God.
indivisible. With liberty.
And justice for all. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is public communications. Sherri, Lucas, do we have anything from the public? No voice, no email?
Well, Bill Mylley's.
Yes, yes, I think we all got got the emails from Bill Mylley. Okay. There being no other evident public comment, we'll move on to the consent item. That is, the minutes of the regular meeting of the planning commission from October 21st. Any comments from the commissioners? Hearing none, I'd love to have a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion. The we accept the minutes from the Ojai Planning Commission from the October 21st, 2020 meeting.
Very good.
A second.
Second from Commissioner Lottis, okay? And Sherri, your roll call?
Chair Quilisi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Trent?
Yes.
Thank you.
John, it sounds like it's alphabetical after the officers. You may be stuck at the back for a long time.
Yeah, right. The Joes is my last name.
Next is our discussion item. And the Title X cleanup and errata. Lucas, would you take us through it, please?
Yeah, sure. So, good evening, commissioners. The item before you tonight is a discussion item. We're not doing a public hearing. There is no action. We are looking for discussion, comments, some direction, if there's things that the commission is seeing tonight that we need to discuss at kind of a 20,000-foot level. That's great. If it's stuff that we want to start looking at in terms of a deeper dive, then we highlight those areas and certainly we can come back to those. I think we've been been doing that up to this point. And remember, these are the items such as errata and minor revisions. So just keep that in mind as we're looking through this. There's about 30 or so sections that we're looking at tonight. And just know, as a discussion item, I have staff currently working on adding to this. So it won't just be 30 sections or so that we're looking at here. But we wanted to start the discussion tonight just to show that there is progress. We continue to move forward with this item and and to get to some of that deeper dive stuff once we clear this. The minor revisions and errata that we're looking at here.
As I recall, as I recall, Lucas, we have already approved and recommended to City Council two draft ordinances for text amendments. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And just as an update to that, we're looking at scheduling those items in a future city council meeting. So that is getting put into the hopper here. So it'll just be a matter of time before those end up going forward.
Okay. And how do you how do you think the rest of the errata is going? Is there going to be another? Is it going to be another 30 sections that the staff has found?
There are over 100 sections still left for review. So we're not quite done, but I would say we're on. So we were here, right? And I feel like we're starting to to go here with the errata.
Good.
Start getting into some of that deeper dive stuff and start really kind of massaging the code, if you will. Right now, I feel like this is the foundation for what that'll look like.
Yeah, rounded the turn.
Yeah.
Yeah, terrific. Okay. So here we are. This is item three, is it? No, item two.
Item two, yes.
Yep. Are there any any comments or questions from staff? I had one on the on the admin report, but I don't think it's necessary to get into that. We still have on on page one, we have a reference to text amendment 19005. I presume that's going to be something different now.
Yeah, we'll renumber that. What was important, what's really kind of important here as a discussion item is that we focus on the the sections of the of the code itself. The ordinance itself will be brought forward in a more complete form as a part of a resolution as we've done in the past. So.
Right, okay. Are there others? As you can, as you can see in reading through this, much of the change that we see here is continuing to add title, chapter, article, and section names as as those pieces are called out. There is one that that might be worthy of a little bit of discussion. And that is the instance of a couple of a couple of terms that are introduced in these. I don't know if we've seen them in in prior sections. But on page nine, the let me see, it is 10 to 2604. And so this is the bottom line, the last line of page nine. There's a reference to the city's SEQA guidelines. I'm wondering, do we? We know what the state SEQA guidelines are. They're called out in CCR Section 15,000 and following. Do we need to make the city's SEQA guidelines the same thing, or are they something different? Are they more comprehensive than that? Have we have we done something to to tighten those guidelines? And if so, where? And if so, shouldn't we cite it?
Yeah, so.
Or should we simply define city's SEQA guidelines, say, in 10 to 3602, and leave it at that, whatever the proper definition is?
Yeah, so just to just to give a little bit of context, the city currently has no city SEQA guideline. It's something that is in the hopper for me to to work on and to bring forward to to this commission and obviously to City Council. But there is no guideline that the city has. We would follow SEQA guidelines.
If it's if it's the state SEQA guidelines, at least from a legal point of view, I think that's okay with me. Daniel?
Strike cities at this point, you mean? Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, yeah, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Commissioner. I would just.
I defer to you on this.
So I I think Lucas is correct here. I think that's that's probably the best approach.
Yeah. Say, the city's SEQA guidelines are PRC 20, what's 21,000, I think, et cetera?
Yeah, I think it's important that we reference because it is the public resource code, which is starts at 21,000 extra.
Yeah. But we don't, we don't want to define it in the text of the of the code because it arises so many times. So if we just put a definition somewhere, I think that'll work.
What we've done in other places is we've put in a hyperlink to the state code whenever we when we mentioned it at the very beginning. So at the very beginning of Title X, when we discussed the land use and development code of the city, we've we we can insert when our all references to, for example, there are there are certain, all the laws that govern our land use and development code, including SEQA, the Subdivision Map Act, the Health and Safety Code, and the various other provisions that are implicated here. We we in the in other cities and what we can do here is simply put in a hyperlink in the code itself. And so it cross-references to what the state exactly says.
That works for me. Do we make 20 or 30 hyperlinks in the code? Because there are between city's SEQA guidelines and city's environmental review procedures, I think is the other name. Yeah, city's environmental review procedures. I'm not sure what the second one is. There are 20 or 30 instances at least in Title X. So do we have staff turn all of those into the same hyperlink? It seems to me like we should. Reference it that way.
Well, a better way would be simply having one hyperlink at the very beginning of the code where we mention that that the city's code is governed by the following. There's a specific section. I'm pulling up the code right now. In Title X, where we where we discuss or introduce the top of the section, my rather than simply linking it every time to.
Well, we could certainly do adoption of code. I'm not sure where where we would put it in Title X. Title X, Chapter 1?
Yeah, I think that that could be that we could do it in Title X's Chapter 1. We could also do it in Chapter 2, which is the Purpose and Effect of Zoning Regulations. And we couldn't, you know, we could draft some language or I could draft some language to to place it in that section.
Say in 10, oh, that's Title, a purpose of the chapter? 10 to 102? Or authority and general plan consistency? I'm not, okay, well, if if you 10 to 105A has compliance with regulations required. Maybe they would talk about the source there.
Right, well, 10 to 10 to 103 subsection A says that in compliance with the mandated provisions of state law. And we could break that out into the various things that do govern the code, such as the subdivision map act, the housing, the health and safety code, the housing code, the state housing code, and SEQA.
Okay.
I like that.
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds like a good place to put it. If if you and Lucas can draft some language, then we can look at that next time through.
Yeah, I think that that's probably the, I would say that's the best approach because that lays out at the very beginning that everything that we're referring to is, and I mean, if somebody really wanted to look at it, they could reference that. We, right now, it's more of a general definition of mandated provisions of state law. And it doesn't really go into, you know, detail about what specific provisions of state law govern our our code with respect to this title.
Well, and and I'm sure if not in this title, then certainly in others, we have gone beyond state code in setting requirements or restrictions or whatever. I don't know if that's the case in Title X. I tend to fall asleep reading the state code.
It reads like stare of instruction.
Yeah. Um. Does that sound all right to to you commissioners that we let them put in some kind of a generalized reference that cites the authority and state law?
Yeah, we can include that with the next, when we when we bring this back with additional sections. I think that'd be a good time to kind of look at what that, see what that looks like.
Right.
And just just for reference, the other one that I was talking about, it's calling out the state, I'm sorry, calling out the city's environmental review procedures. I'm not sure what that is yet. It may be something we need to do a deep dive on and figure out. If we have.
Get that on?
All or this is on page 14, section 10 to 2902A4.
With the with paragraph that starts, if a proposed negative declaration, is that what you're talking about?
Right, that's the one. Second line talks about in compliance with the city's environmental review procedures. Um.
Yeah.
Again, that it it's a phrase, there's there's no definition for it right now, though the the procedures themselves may may in fact occur somewhere else in the code that I'm that I'm unaware of.
Not that I'm aware of, or else I'd be following them. So they do not exist.
Yeah. I mean, we follow the state SEQUAs, really lays out all the procedures, although there could be procedural discussion that would be eventually included in the in the city's guidelines if we if we do get around to that, to looking at that.
And I I I confess, I looked for environmental review procedure in the state code and couldn't find anything either.
They don't, they, right, they don't have anything labeled procedure, but all the procedures are specified under SEQA.
Right.
Or or it's part of how to make, how to do an EIR or something. I don't know. Maybe maybe that's the way we attack it. And that, I think, is probably something we should handle as a deep dive on 10 to 2902, where we can, we can go off and figure out if there is already appropriate language somewhere and borrow, or that in fact occurs somewhere that we know of already, either in the code or the state law, and and do something with that so that the term itself is is not unknowable to the average citizen who wants to look at the code.
I agree, Steve.
Okay, okay.
Dive.
We'll deep dive on environmental review procedures. Are there other? Are there other pieces of these 30-odd sections of errata and minor changes that that any of you picked up? I, we'd had it the last time around. Yes, Commissioner Nolan?
Yeah, I just had a couple things for discussion. On page three of 20, and this is in regards to the lighting ordinance, under outdoor light fixtures. Well, let me just say this. Number one, I think we might need to do a dive. I'm not sure if it's a deep dive, but a dive. So I just wanted to say that in regards to the ordinance for future reference. And part of the reason I'm saying it is that on that outdoor light fixtures, on the last sentence, it says such devices shall include but are not limited to search spot and floodlights.
Another one of those.
So some of that, I feel like there may be a conflict with those fixtures in in relationship to the dark sky ordinance. There's that, but then if you go further down the page where it says residential entrance light or porch light shall mean lighting or low lumen intensity. And then it says in this definition, it gives the definition, should that definition be up with our definitions? Or because it's so specific and not generic, should it just stay where it's at? I know the question just came to me, you know, I'm throwing it up for discussion. I think it's whatever we decide.
I see what you mean. It says in this definition, a low lumen light is so on.
But should lumen be included above and maybe some other more updated definitions included that I think would help an applicant, designer, and or the commission when we're reviewing a lighting plan, we'd go, oh, I understand now what a Kelvin is and what a lumen is, and just have that general information there because as the lighting becomes more energy efficient and we're shifting away from, let's say, fluorescent to more LED, some of that those definitions may be more appropriate. And I know that's more on the deep dive. But I just was specifically on this time around, looking at that definition under what said low lumen intensity.
Some of those definitions may also, I I would caution, some of those definitions may also change because we are in the process of adopting a reach code.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, it's still going to be electric and not gas, but there's that efficiency component. So anyway, I just kind of wanted to point that out. And then I guess the question is, for now, do we keep the you know, where it says in this definition, a low lumen light is? Or should we just wait and see what happens with the reach code and then approach it at that point?
I think I think probably all, just about all the lights are electric already.
Well, they are. None of them are gas.
Yeah.
Or any other alternative.
But I'm wondering, it says in this definition, a low lumen light. Would a lumen light be different under some other definition?
I was kind of wondering, too.
Yeah, I think this is specific to the city of Ojai. In other words, when the dark sky ordinance probably was adopted or developed, some, for some reason, they came up with that definition. And my question is, we probably should review it at some point to make sure it's still appropriate.
I I would, I would be perfectly happy by if with taking that second sentence under residential entrance light or porch light, since it already says low lumen intensity.
Right.
And and pull out low lumen, a low lumen intensi, why is intensity in there?
And then do we put a definition of lumen up in the regular?
Well, we could put low lumen and lumen both up in the definitions of this this section, 10 to 16502. That's fine with me.
Yeah, and I do believe the low lumen definition that is included here. I can be positive, but it may be specific to the city of Ojai, to our dark sky ordinance, or maybe they pulled it from other dark sky ordinances. I don't know. But it's worth double checking on that.
I I don't, I don't know if the if there's been it, if since since the ordinance was passed in 2013, has the the standard of 450 lumens
Right.
been updated or revised or changed?
Right. And like I said, I'm not sure if that is a general standard or did, was it an initiator to develop by the city of Ojai when they did the ordinance? I'm not positive or sure on that. But then back to the definitions, do we need to include that above or here?
Now that we talk about it, I I recall having read through 10 to 16.5 a couple of times, and I don't recall seeing the phrase dark sky or or and I don't remember seeing things that talked about the light can't be directed upward and stuff. I'm sure it's in the code somewhere. I don't remember where.
Oh, it is. But dark sky is not. You're you're correcting the dark sky component, but there is provisions that talk about shielding light.
Right. There there there's language, including, for example, uplighting and sky glow that and correcting sky glow is part of the dark sky ordinance.
Right. And is that all, is that all different language that's in 10 to 16.5? Or is it somewhere else? I would have thought it would be there, exterior lighting standards.
It's it's in 10 to 16.502 in the definition section.
Okay. So maybe.
Uplighting, you said, you called it, or?
Yes, uplighting.
I see light pollution.
Solarism there, light pollution.
Sky glow and uplighting are at the top of page four.
Right.
Okay.
Sky glow, yeah. But yeah, I, did you search for dark sky? I think that was just a phrase.
What was that?
Used. I think that wasn't that just a phrase that we'd use to describe?
Yes.
It's a colloquial term for those type of releases. It's just what is, what is, yeah.
And everybody knows when we say dark sky, what that means. We know that ordinance, right?
Right.
Everybody's familiar with that.
Well, anyway, I think a dive in the future would be good.
All right, I noted it. It's a good, that's a good, a good deeper dive. And that could, that could and and interject other discussions and pulling some other different code code sections as well in that discussion.
Right, because that gets into signage and signage lighting also, which may.
All within 16? What is that?
16.
That's a separate, it's separate from this, but I can see, you know, there's, it could be referenced or over, there might be overlap. But I think I had, let me see, I think I had one more. That was the one you did. I had another one on page 15.
Can I just, Kathy, I I have a, I have a, I have some questions or comments on page six. I think this is still under the lighting stuff. Page six.
Yes, page six is still under 10 to 16.5.
Lighting. See if I can figure out my notes here. So the director can grant an exemption. And we've listed out basically, I think it sounds like it's like three findings that they need to make, really, to make the director exemption. Let's see, wait a minute here.
There we are. It's right in the middle of the page.
Yeah.
Right.
It's a little, it's a little harder to read because the indenting is not the way it's going to be in the final code.
So under finding number one, well, we say there are special circumstances or conditions applying to the land buildings or outdoor light.
We've lost.
Commissioner Lottis, you're on, you've muted yourself, it looks like.
You're muted.
Sorry about that. Okay, sorry. Okay, with finding number one, there are special circumstances or conditions applying to the land buildings or outdoor light fixtures. But what what we're referencing, we left out a word, really. That's referencing the project land buildings and outdoor light fixtures because it then says which circumstances or conditions are peculiar to land buildings and outdoor light fixtures that are that are in the neighborhood. So I I just thought we should kind of distinguish between the project land buildings and the outdoor light fixtures in the neighborhood. I, and just a one-word change there, maybe.
What what are you looking for?
There are special circumstances or conditions applying to the project land buildings or outdoor light fixtures for which the administrative exemption is sought.
Okay.
Yeah, it's more specific.
Just because the same language, language is repeated twice in the sentence.
Right.
That's good, yeah.
And.
Insert project before the first land in B1?
Yes. And in number two, finding number two, I have a question. So the the aforesaid circumstance or conditions are such that the strict application of the provisions of basically this section would deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of land, buildings, or outdoor light fixtures. I just, I read this and I just was, I what does this mean? I cannot, I just cannot envision lighting.
With the circumstances.
Somebody wanting to stick to some kind of old-fashioned bright lighting that's not in compliance that would preclude their use of land, buildings, or whatever.
Preclude, preclude the use, the reasonable use.
Yeah, I I just cannot, I can, I I I couldn't figure out what in the world would be even you know, something that would, that this this finding would apply to.
Like, for instance, we should. Like, for instance, but we should. Give us an example. I mean, not that we have to be an example in there.
No, but.
Take a discussion, yeah, what?
Old fashioned lighting that somebody would absolutely need to have. Because if they didn't have it, they couldn't have reasonable use of their land buildings or outdoor light fixtures. I it's.
Might apply to a landmarked property, for example.
Right, that. That would prob- that's what I was.
But it is. I I'll agree, it's hard to it's hard to imagine what that is.
So I would just mark this, uh if we're coming back to the uh uh exterior lighting standards, I think that would be fine to just, you know.
Here's my, here's my two cents on this. I think it's. You know, in the code, it's good to have some of that flexibility in terms of of justification. I mean, these are case by case scenarios. We just mentioned one one case and as it relates to a historic piece of property. I mean. Um that are brought to the brought to the forefront and are were given. A justifiable rationale for that and a process. That process would either end up in the hands of of myself. Or something that could potentially end up in the hands of the planning commission, depending on how that ends up um playing out, so. I I think there needs to be a little bit of, and I I don't mind having the discussion and and maybe even drumming up some kind of um. Examples of what that could look like. But I mean, each applicant that comes in. I think there's there is there is a little bit of flexibility that needs to be drawn in, not necessarily saying that it's a yes, yes, yes. It's more of a, how do we, how do we find solutions to what you're proposing and where is that true justification? Kind of like what you, when when you're looking at a minor variance, um there those findings are in a variance, variance finding. It's what's unique about that piece of property that's different from anything else, right? So or even the situation in terms of how that building relates to the site, so.
I think Nikhil had something to add from other sources.
Well, I was just gonna underlet make the point that in some, for example, in some of the historical. I mean, it seems it would to me that would strike me as a carve out for, you know, either a a nonconforming building. Or some sort of uh historical protected where the light fixture is an integral part um. Of of the landmark designation.
What we call a character defining element.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, if if that if that is the one of the intentions, I would, uh I and again, I I'm not proposing putting anything changes tonight. But um I think something like that should be specifically mentioned. Uh that there are, that there could be, there's there should be flexibility um given. A building with a historic status. And and the other thing, if if we do, so these aren't really variances. I mean, this is kind of variance like or light. But um it's not really a variance, it's a exemption.
We're talking about directors exemptions here.
Exactly, right.
And and we each of us have the chance to review each one of those. Because we know about them now.
Right, again, a deeper deeper dive coming back, um I think we should talk about a provision that considers um. Some kind of time limitation on getting an exemption for a light fixture. Um because. You know, at some point, you have to adapt to what's, to where the community is going and not hold on to something. That's outdated forever. With exceptions of the historic buildings, I can certainly see that, but I I just think that. If we're granting these except exemptions, that possibly a time limitation might be in order. Ten year, I don't know, five years, ten years, something.
Or or perhaps just language that says the planning commission has the authority to review. These things after the fact if lighting standards change.
Well, they're not in compliance.
Doing that to anyone else, we're not saying to people that have legal nonconforming buildings. Or people that have legal go- legal conforming buildings, that we're gonna review their conformance if the rules change. So I think.
I just think that giving unlimited amount of time to somebody to maintain some really old fashioned glaring. Light fixtures. It needs to, it needs to have a life, a termination of life at some point and. But uh you know, again, I'm just kind of laying that out as something. Discussion point for the future.
Landmark landmark buildings get a whole lot more leeway than other things. And it's not clear that other things are gonna get much leeway out of this paragraph.
A one way.
Review it all.
Yeah, one way of possibly approaching it, and this is probably worth for a deeper dive as to how we would do this language, would be. In the same way, for example, we require, we make a distinction between partial reconstruction and total reconstruction for. Applying new building code standards. A replacement would have to apply the newest um light standards, but if they never choose to replace it. I I it would be difficult for us to mandate that they replace it um without any sort of by 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 regulation.
Mandate replacing lighting fixtures that were.
Or or setting a time limit on on light, if 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 it's a if it's a uh, if it's not a historic building. And we we want them to upgrade to the newest light fixtures and it's a full replacement of the existing light fixture. We may simply do it the same way we do with the building code, where we would apply the newest building code standards to full reconstruction as opposed to partial.
Right, that tip makes sense to me, and then when you get back to the landmark or historical one, it's a completely different.
It's a completely.
Animal, so to speak, because if there's a preexisting light fixture, you may not even be able to to insert like an LED bulb into it. So that would be the exemption. It makes sense to me.
Okay, so we're, I I I sense we may be okay with the current language. Understanding that if it gets a director's exemption, that we'll have a chance to look at it.
Like we always do.
Like we always do.
Oh yeah, no, that I think the current language is fine until we come back to this with a maybe a um more of a comprehensive look at it.
Okay, did you have some other sections that you were looking through here and want to discuss? I think Commissioner Nolan had gone a little past page six.
Something in between going.
In between page eight, I it's just a question um at the top of page eight. I I just didn't really know what this meant. The remedies provided for in. Uh title ten, chapter two, article sixteen point five shall be cumulative and not exclusive. I I just didn't really understand what that what that means, and staff can probably answer that.
Cumulative makes sense to me, not exclusive is not less clear to me. I think cumulative means if you violate two or three sections that have different. Call it punishments or fines or something. Not exclusive, I'm not sure what that means.
Comma in compliance with, and really, it's article thirty five issues enforcement.
Okay, so you could have, you could have five, five violations in there. You can be cited for one.
Separate penalty for each one. You have to put up with all five penalties. Nikhil, have you run into this but not exclusive?
Yeah, well, it's a s- it's standard language. It's a in the in in any remedies clause in a contract is that. That cumulative and nonexclusive simply means that um that this is not the sole remedy.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Nikhil.
Good, that's a good explanation then, thank you.
And um.
Okay, did you have more?
Well, it's um so it actually, I think I had meant to make this comment before, but um. We have a lot of references to time extensions in the code, and they're always, they always seem to be a hundred and eighty days. Which to me is really um limited. I don't, I don't know why we're stuck on a hundred and eighty days. Uh but again, I think that's a policy discussion and we could come back to that, but I do notice on page ten. Under time extension, kind of middle of the page. Um it says the commission may, upon an application being filed before expiration. And for good cause, we can grant a one time extension not to exceed a hundred and eighty days. And then, but now with the. We've got underlined in red. I think it's a question from Lucas.
Yeah, it was, it was more of a a.
They reference a twelve month extension, which I, you know, frankly. I I mean, I would be very open to just making all those time extensions in the in the title ten. A twelve month extension because six months were almost anything, any kind of building or. Project approval or whatever, the hundred and eighty days is not, to me, is not not adequate.
You know, it's an interesting um question that you're bringing up, and I I think because of all the different. Sections that this lives in in terms of how it's referenced, it may be in terms of the deeper dive, looking at. All those sections in one meeting and saying, okay, in this section, it says this. Does that make sense? Does that seem logical? In this section, it says this, does that make sense? Is that logical? And piece those together and see if, see if we can make apples to apples and oranges to oranges in terms of a hundred and eighty versus potentially a year. Or shorter, I don't, and that all those discussions, I think, are in play.
It's also interesting that it says the commission can grant a one hundred and eighty day extension, but the director can grant a one year extension. Well, let's hold time extensions in general then for a dive.
Another deep dive.
Good idea, good idea.
Okay, Kathy, I think you had something on.
Right, I think until page fifteen and it was a question. About in the middle of the page, um item D. It says, in addition to the types of notice required by subsections being seen above, the director may provide additional notice with. Content or using a distribution method as the director or commission determines is necessary or desirable. Example, use of a greater radius for notice, and then comma on the internet, and I didn't know if that needed to be more um.
We need an or in there.
Yeah, um and when it says on the internet, is that referring to, is it an email? Do you go to the city website? Is it on social media? I I'm not sure if we need a little more uh clarity there.
I don't like the word internet period, I'll be quite honest.
I, yeah, I just.
Other modes in order for that to get done, and internet sounds very early two thousand.
Exactly.
Or how about just saying or using digital media?
Yeah, digital media is.
Yeah, and I don't know if you want to give an example of what that means, but maybe it's just digital media and the director has the um. You know, can make make the uh choice as to what that will be.
In in this case, it it might be better to define it broadly as digital media and let the director have the discretion, depending on what kind of. What kind of notice we want to give.
Instead of on the internet, then we put in or using digital media or via digital.
Or or through the use of digital media.
What, what page are we on, Kathy? I'm sorry.
We're on page fifteen, and if you look right right below the middle of the page, there's item D. And it's um starts with in addition.
I I see, yeah.
The last sentence.
Because the the standard, the standard protocol is to do. Post office mailings to everyone within a certain distance of the project, right? And so this just says you can do more than that at at the director's or the commission's discretion.
Right. I have a question just up a little bit under um on the same page, so it's um. It's uh number four, so we've got one, two, three, and the little, the little uh lowercase letters. One, two, three, four at the top, so it's number four. That that first sentence is is crossed out and I'm not sure, so I didn't.
Not meant to be.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, it's not in red.
For whatever reason, yeah, when these were transposed over, I noticed this on a lot of different pages, that there was this line that was going through. And I had to go in and and click that line, so I, that's an error that needs to be.
Okay, so that's.
Not meant to be.
That's not a strike two.
Okay.
It's it's kind of different. I mean, there, we just need, when we do adopt the ordinance, we need to make sure that that that. Because the code, the code compiler will see that, I mean, make a point that Roman numerate four.
Yeah, it's, it's it was weird when when we were copying things over, somehow there was this line that kept. Re reappearing on certain sections. It's the oddest thing when you would think just simply copying something over would just be like, you just copy it over. Probably it's not that simple, it brings things over for some reason.
Never, never that simple.
Um in in the subsection just above the one we were talking about with digital media. I may have misread it, but it looks to me like. At at the end of that subsection C, two C. Um it looks like both the three and the four are struck. And I think the four is supposed to be underli- underlined and the three struck. I went back and looked at the code section.
Did you? Okay, I was gonna say, let me look real quick here. Do you think it's A four?
I think it's supposed to be six, five, oh, nine, A four, yes.
Uh, yep, you're correct. And that's actually a government code section that I use a lot.
Alright, commissioners, is there more?
That that was all I had.
That's all I have um.
I think on on page seventeen. Uh paragraph C two at the top, there is a highlighted section.
Oh, yeah.
That looks like a question or or a request for a deep dive. Not a specific request for a change to the text. But if if we agree that that um. That the topic that's highlighted there is appropriate for a later review. Then that highlighted stuff should be pulled out of the text amendment.
Yeah, well. Yeah, by the time we get to the uh the final version for or commission consideration. These, this will all be in black and white like before. Um but yes, that was a question that I had had, but then I answered it, but I left it in because I wanted to to make a point about something. Any person who wishes to join an appeal may follow the same procedures for an opponent. In compliance with section ten two, three, zero, zero, three, and then that's the filing of the appeal. So if they want to to join it, but do it kind of in a separate separate manner within that timeframe of the appeal period. They can, they can pay for the, they can pay for the appeal fee, and they can provide um their appeal and their rationale for that appeal in. In writing as well, so and that would be considered separately but jointly as a part of the full appeal.
And that's why a separate filing fee is required.
Correct. Correct, so. Yeah, because here it says, as written, this would appear to require a separate filing fee from each party that wishes to join the appeal, so yes. That is true, or they just, they're they're just aware, there's two ways of 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 looking at that. There's the way of filing it and being known that you are um, you're doing it as a as a party to that. But also, you're filing it separately, I want to make sure I get this correct, versus just simply being aware of the appeal. And and partaking in that and commenting during the comment.
Speaking at a part planning commission meeting and saying, I agree with the basis for that appeal. That would.
Or you potentially draw strength from paying for that by by identifying that you have this vested. Interest in whatever that appeal happens to be.
Yeah.
Versus attending or providing written comments.
All right, yeah, I, okay, I'm, I, I can understand that then, when, uh. When our, our son clerked for Justice Gorsuch. I became quite aware of separate concurrences and separate. What's the other side? What do you call it? But people, people would say, yes, I agree, we should or shouldn't rule this way, but I have a different reason for it.
Yeah.
Friends brief, or whatever they call it.
Yeah, what's, what's the name for it, Nikhil?
Amicus brief?
You can have separate concurrences, you can also have separate.
Oh, so it's separate dissents.
Separate dissents, that's it, of course, yeah, okay.
You, you, you might, you might need to define that for me, I've never even heard that term before.
Uh, well, I, I.
I'm just kidding, I'm not asking for you to.
So we're talking about, we're talking, talking in effect what becomes.
Yeah.
It says, if you want to make a separate appeal, then you have to do a separate filing fee.
E- exactly.
You want to just concur in an appeal, you don't need to do anything except say so in a public meeting. Okay.
So, so this section, this section is on appeal, so when we get around to the, um, appealing of the director exemption. I don't know if this is the section where that would go, but, or whether it would go under the director. Director appeal, a director exemption section, but, um, I assume this. This is, appeal section covers all appeals of all, uh.
Article thirty, yes.
So forth under Title X, right?
Correct.
So I imagine.
In terms of blanketing the entire title.
I think another section under article thirty is where we would find director exemptions, right? Or appeals of director exemptions? Does this three double oh four?
I wanna, hold, hold on a second, appeals.
Article thirty, yeah.
Articles.
Purpose of the article, appeal of action.
Actually, here it's showing, oh, it does actually show a lot of adjustments minor conditions for plan developments.
Yep, it's, it, ten, two, three, zero, zero, two. B, it says, any determination or decision rendered by the director may be appealed to the commission. Then it talks about commission appeals. And council appeals.
Council appeals.
And so under three, zero, zero, two, B. We probably, in, in the course of a deep dive, perhaps, should add something in there. About the, the director's exemption appeals and maybe. Pull in all or part of that administrative procedure, six dot four.
Yeah, cause right now it just says, any determination or deci- decision rendered by the director may be appealed. To the commission, but it also, just above that, and hey, it says, any determination. Rendered by the department staff may be appealed to the commission. One would argue that those should be merged into one, department staff. The director oversees department staff, so thus, their decision is the director's decision. In part, in extension thereof.
The director would, would have to approve of the department staff determination.
Yep, yeah, so.
Yeah, we could certainly do that, and then maybe add some meat to that one sub-paragraph.
Yeah, and that, that could be sooner than later, I think there's, there's definitely, um, something in the. Been working on something in the, uh, in the pipeline for that, so we'll be talking about that soon, but yeah, that's a good. That's a good point within the appeal section.
Agree.
I, I just have one, one last question on page nineteen, so, um. Let's see, under chapter two, section ten dash two point three, five oh two, responsibility. Um, we're scratching out, so we, number one, let's see, what is this? B one, so we're, it's got conditional use permits, and then we're scratching out and minor conditional use permits. Is that, is that because minor condition, it's be, minor conditional use permits becomes a subsection under that is?
There's still conditional use permits, I guess was the thought there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't remember if we have separate code sections for conditional use permits. And minor conditional use permits, I, I thinks, I think conditional use permits is probably. Its own article.
Yeah.
I don't know about minor conditional use.
It is not, not like, uh, what you have for variances and minor variances, which are their own articles and separate articles. One of the, and maybe this is even a, a large, I think it was a larger discussion, we talked about something like this early on. Um, I want to say several months ago, about the idea of having minor conditional use permits. As their own article, as a deeper dive.
We did, yeah.
That was, I, I remember having that discussion and thinking, why wasn't, why isn't that already done? Uh, because it just kind of folds itself, it's kind of hidden within the CUP process itself. You kind of stumble upon it and looking at, looking at the regulations and findings and.
Okay, so it's, it's just, uh, it's just, uh, language that's in there now, but I, I guess I thought we already had some minor CUPs, so, but we don't.
We do, it's under, it's under conditional use permit, but it doesn't, it doesn't hold. The same ground that CUP does, it's a minor CUP that handles that stop well. But to give it, to give it more strength, having it as a separate article, uh, would, would make more sense, pulling it, pulling it out.
Article twenty-four is conditional use permits under chapter two. Are there also something about conditional use permits in, uh, article thirteen?
Yeah, so if you go to article twenty-four, let's just, let's just go through the exercise, I want to show you guys where this is living.
You're gonna share it?
Yeah, so, I could share a screen, do you guys want me to do that?
Sure.
Sure.
I don't remember how to do it.
Share screens down at the bottom of your screen.
There you go.
You go?
Yep, we can see it.
All right. Let me show all. Scroll down here. So you can see. You can see here, there is, there's applicability, land use activities listed in article two through seven. Of this chapter may be allowable, subject to a conditional use permit. Then it has the following land use activities may be allowed with the approval of a minor conditional use permit, and then it lists the six items here. So instead of it having its own article. It's living and breathing within the CUP, um, parameters itself, you. You could potentially do the same thing for a minor variance, but it was very specific about making that variant, that minor variance separate. And in our earlier discussions, we had talked about pulling this out and creating its own separate article for clarification purposes.
Yeah, and I guess for consistency also.
Consistency.
Doing one, we should do both.
Anyway, yeah.
Proves it, and, you know, all that stuff should be called out.
I, I'm wondering also, twenty-four oh three, ten two, twenty-four oh three, A. Would seem to imply. That it, it says, the land use activities listed in articles two, three, seven, that's all those. All those land use tables and such may be allowable, subject to the approval of a conditional use permit. That would seem to imply that no matter what it is you want to do. Whether it says P or CUP. That it may be allowable, subject to the approval of a CUP. And that certainly seems contrary to the plain language of articles two through seven. Not all of which are subject to a CUP.
Yeah, it is a little funky in terms of how that reads, may be allowed. That's assuming that the whole chart itself is a CUP.
If it said the land use activities marked CUP and listed in articles two through seven.
Yeah.
That, that would be consistent at least.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, that's. Good call, Steve, that's.
Well, we're, we're gonna go on finding things like this forever, I'm afraid.
Yeah.
Well, we'll just do the best that we can as we make these passes.
Yep.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All right, well, that was, that's some good information here for this. This is thirty sections, but I felt like we got a lot of, a lot of good information out of it. And just know, as I said before, there'll be more, we'll be adding on to this pile, um, when we come back again. And the idea is to have this come back in, in two weeks.
Have it come back in two weeks and be a larger number of sections to review.
Larger number of sections, but it won't be, um, for public hearing at that point, I think. What I want to try to get is the larger section, get as much of that into this. Whether it ends up being doubled or, or maybe slightly larger than doubled, um, for one more discussion prior to coming forward in public hearing.
Okay. You, you've got enough of our feedback then for.
Yeah, no, this is good. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item three, the director's decisions. Any questions there from commissioners?
Lots of tree issues.
Lots of tree issues.
I did notice that.
Of them where there's no replacement.
Yeah, some of these are hazard, ha, they've been deemed as hazardous trees, and as you, I'm sure all the commission knows. We can't require those, those trees to be replaced, but that doesn't mean that I can't ask the question, so I, I typically ask that question and we put that to the, uh. To the property owners, I would say the vast majority end up replacing, um, cause they, uh, you know, they see a benefit to it, and ends up being. For losing maybe a, um, an invasive species, hopefully regaining something that is not invasive, um, so.
And, and I apologize, is there a difference between a valley oak and a coast live oak?
Yeah, different species.
Different species, so one, is one, we have a requirement that they need to be replaced or planted elsewhere, and the other one does not have that requirement, is that correct?
Well, they're both protected by the state of California, number one, but as Lucas was saying, if it's hazardous. We don't require replacement if it's, um, being removed or there's any damage.
Right.
And it's healthy, then there is mitigation or remediation involved.
Yep.
We had a hazardous limb removed from an oak tree in our yard here because it was. The, the tree was diseased and the, and the large limb, I mean, this big, was hanging over the house. And so the arborist said, you need to take that limb off. For example, this is many years ago, fifteen years ago or more.
Yeah, there's lots of.
If it's hazardous, you don't want to say you've got to put another tree in the same place, cause that might grow up to be hazardous as well.
Right, I, I think it almost gets back to something, um, well, a deeper dive.
Yeah.
When there is a tree report, it's not required presently, but I believe that it should be required. That the arborist. Um, state what the problem was. Sometimes a tree is dead because it's had too much irrigation and you. You know, if the soil was soggy and the tree went over, or because there was too much irrigation, you induced a, um, a disease. Which ended up killing a tree, but if you write down what the cause was, hopefully it can get remediated and or. If you are doing replacement, you might go, oh, the tree died from oak root fungus or malaria mealia. Oh, I am not going to, I now want a new tree there, I'm not going to plant a tree that's susceptible to that disease. So it's all about a smart, smart planning for an urban forest. But when you have that information, a lot of times you can resolve the problem and or, like I said, if you're gonna put a new tree there. You're not gonna put something that's susceptible to whatever caused the problem.
Lucas, if there, if there were to be a requirement for, let's call it cause of death or whatever. Of a tree in a tree report, where would that go? Is there a part of the code that specifies what goes in a tree report?
Um, it could be within our tree ordinance, we could identify the, the specific type of. Cause typically we're, we're asking with an application, what, what we need with that application, we could also specify what should be in that application.
Okay, it's not in, not in ten, two, twelve.
It's not in, it's not in Title X though, it's.
It's not in there.
Title four, I think.
But I, I believe that it's worthy of discussion, I will say, I'm just gonna put a different hat on for the moment. Cause I have been a member of the tree committee over the years, although we're not actively meeting right now. We did bring this up, and we had gone to a past city manager, and they were totally interested in this whole update. The city manager changed and the whole thing wa- lost in the shuffle, but I think it's a, um, a very valid. It's valid information that. Um, would support the health of the community forest overall by having that information. And another thing they could optionally do would be to even make a recommendation for a replacement, but, you know, I, maybe that's pushing the limit. But I think by saying what the cause of death or the hazard, what caused the hazard is very important to include.
Well, I would be very interested in revisiting the tree ordinance at some point, and, um. You know, I mean, I know I've, I've brought it up before, but I, I would be very interested in, in pursuing. Uh, discussions to, that does talk about replacement or at the very least. Um, payment into the city's tree fund, and, you know, and requiring a replacement. Either through the in lieu fee or, or actual replacement, and, and talking about the ratio of what the replacement should be, because if we. We really do need to, I'm, I'm, you know, to take proactive action on, on protection of our tree canopy. And our urban forest, um, to, to me is very, very important to this community as a whole. And to, um, continue, uh, to continue the growth of the trees at different rates. So that we have different ages, and I think, um, Michael Anabat was talking about the valley oaks. Um, at one of our recent meetings and, and the value of the valley oaks, and they, they are dying out, I, I have a huge one right in my front yard, but, um.
They are dying out, and that, that's a fact.
And they're significant, they don't grow in very many locations in California, I mean, we have a unique, absolutely unique location with. That where valley oaks do grow, so, um.
I agree with you, Kathy, um, a hundred percent, and I, I think it's something we definitely should look at. And the approach might be, um, the approach of lost canopy. But even if somebody has a hazardous tree, and of course, you know, they have to take it out because of the danger. Um, totally get that, but, um, if that's the case, you still. It's my opinion, should have to, you know, maybe it was a percent of canopy loss, or, you know, a minor fee or whatever. Or a fee and or you could do a replacement, but to demonstrate that would be wonderful, but I, I think we're getting off topic, right?
Yeah, I was about to say. We're starting with something, but we've got, just get back on.
I do want to compliment staff, I want to compliment staff on, um. That, let's see, there's at least three. That, let's see, there's at least three tree removal applications here that they're re- they're replacing. And I really.
Yeah.
I thank you heartily for, um, thinking about it and talking to the applicant about the possibility. Thank you.
And it looks to me like the, the major piece of the code that deals with this is Title four, chapter eleven.
Yeah.
That in fact has four eleven point zero six arborist report that Kathy Nolan was just talking about. Um, something, something where I, I would suggest at this point. It sort of overlaps with the landscape ordinance, I guess, a little bit. But it's not in Title ten and we probably ought to clean up Title ten before we go back and start trying to fix other parts of the code.
Agreed. Um, uh, but that does bring up a, um, Lucas, when the. When the, uh, general plan people were here a couple of weeks or mo- last month, whenever, and they were asking for comments. Um, you know. The, the foundation for kind of laying the groundwork for a revised tree ordinance. Uh, could very well and appropriately come from a discussion and policies in the general plan. And, um, so I would like to, um. Uh, convey that as one of my comments to them. I don't know, should I do it directly or how, what's the process for that again?
So what you could do is you could email me your comment and then, email me your comment and then I will make sure that import that on to, um, Ramia's.
And Lucas, uh, if I'm not cor- if I'm not mistaken, there's gonna be another round of public comment on the general plan update. Um, coming, right, from them?
Uh, yeah, there will be several, uh, so we, we will certainly have, and understand that the. When we met almost a month ago with, um, Ron and Ron, and I think it was actually Matt, we're both at this meeting. Uh, presented, it was a presentation to kind of introduce and identify. Kind of the purpose of the, of the planning commission, what their role is here. I know we talked about the role, the planning commission's role. Seven months ago, right before, I want to say it was back in like February, right before the pandemic, um, kind of hit. But then it was just me talking about it and kind of just talking pie in the sky type of stuff. Here, we've actually. We're actually, we've got the groundwork started here in terms of getting, um, comments and, and information and gotten the fact gathering at this point, so. It was pie in the sky in February, we're, we're definitely in it now, so.
Uh, I actually kind of forgotten about that, so now this is a good, a good reminder, so I'm gonna try to get some emails to you.
Sure.
I hope everybody else does too.
Yeah.
The other thing was, the consultants were actually asking for our input, but I think. The council liaison person was kind of discouraging us giving feedback, so I, anyway, that was a little strange.
I went online and did their, the survey.
Oh, I forgot about that too, okay.
Yes, I encourage, I encourage all of you to go out.
Also with that asset mapping, I looked at that, I haven't done it yet, but it's kind of like identifying like, you know, key locations within the city.
It's a fun little interactive, um, tool as well through Archie, I guess.
Yeah.
Um, and what's, so what's the Bill, letter from Bill Miley on the? Wha- which one was he talking about? Oh, four oh one grand.
Well, that's the shot hole bore.
Yep, shot hole bore, um, yeah, Bill Miley was actually talking about that, that's right, that was one of.
He sent the email.
Emails that we received, and I. Yeah, that was four oh one, I thought it was four ten for a minute there, but it's four oh one.
And basically, I think, believe the county was the one, uh, the vector control.
Right, right, okay, right.
And the county is monitoring and of course I know the city is too. Um, I believe they've had an arborist, um, I'm not sure if they're still actively doing anything, but I think they were kind of monitoring throughout the city.
Yeah.
Uh, for signs of activity, um.
And you know what, I just realized something, um, in that last item, item two. Bill Miley had submitted a comment in regards to a specific, I think we sent that to the entire commission as well.
He did, I think I marked down the page it was on, it was, uh, let me just see if I.
I want to make sure that we, that, that you've all, I want to acknowledge it at the very least here and then, um.
Yes.
Effectuated the word that I think he was, he was getting at.
I couldn't figure out what page it was on.
I found it, um, when I was reading, I went, oh, there it is, uh, and I think I marked it, just give me a second here. Oh, here it is, it's on, uh, page eleven of twenty. And it's on the la- item B, the last item on that page, about halfway through. Uh, in construing the provisions of any development agreement entered into. Inco- entered into in compliance with Title ten, blah, 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 these provisions shall be read to fully. Effectuate and to be consistent with.
Oh, yes.
And that.
Effectuate.
Yeah, which means to put into force or operation.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think it's wonderful that Bill Miley actually read.
Yeah, yeah, no kidding.
No, I, I'm a compliment.
Yeah, no, I, I.
He does, he always reads and, you know, when he makes his comments, I always appreciate that he partakes and. And does make comments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was a contribution from the city's poet laureate.
Is that what he is?
Not, no, whoever wrote it the first time.
Oh.
Anyway, I wanted to make note to that.
Yeah.
That, that wasn't overlooked, that the commission did receive it.
Yeah, we did.
Yep.
Yes. Okay, um, any more questions about director decisions or comments thereon? Then let's move to, uh, item four. Future tentative agenda, agenda and future agenda items. Um, I don't see any, any cases coming up right now.
Yeah, there actually is a case that could very well be coming up, um, and it could very well be scheduled for the December second meeting. And that's for two oh four to two oh six Canyatta, um, that's the R, RTK, uh, studios. Um, they're gonna, they're looking to do an expansion. I don't want to go to anywhere into too much detail on it, but they're looking to do an expansion to that building.
Okay.
Is this, is this the one where, uh, the people at two oh six had bought the adjacent parcel? And they were gonna make a big driveway around the back and all of that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that's the one.
Cause Kathy Nolan, I'm sure would remember that case that came before the planning commission before.
Actually, I think it came forward as a conceptual review.
Oh, right.
Yes. Yeah.
It was before, it was before my turn.
Yeah, it did, I remember that, you know, the decoupage grant in the back and.
Okay. So we may see that one.
I think there's a real good possibility that'll be coming forward on December second.
Okay, anything else you anticipate right now?
The, the review policy of nine, or six point four, I think that's gonna be coming here pretty, pretty quickly as well. I don't want to. I don't want to nail down a date, but I'm, I'm actively working on it.
Maybe one of the next two meetings then. Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, I thank you all for your time and we'll adjourn the meeting at. Seven seventeen. Thank you all. Thank you, Nikhil, for.